Call to order the regular meeting of the planning commission for Wednesday, May 7th, at 6:00 PM. And Ida, if you are out there, can we get a roll call?
Chair Trent.
Here.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Chesley.
Present.
Commissioner Bennett is absent. Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Oh, here, okay. All right, perfect. And pledge of allegiance, I guess I will go lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Cool.
Thanks.
And let's get approval of the agenda. Any changes?
No changes.
All right. This is the time for public communications. Anything set aside that is not on the agenda for today? Any public comments? No? Anything? Anybody online, Ida?
Anyone online?
Ida, are you out there?
Yeah.
No one's online.
No?
Hold on.
Why has this changed? Why has this changed?
We have two people online.
Okay, is it for public communications or is it for item one or two?
Nobody's asking to talk.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, item three, I meant to say. Okay, cool. We'll move on to consent items. Meetings of the regular meeting of the planning commission, April 16th. Anybody have any changes? Any adjustments? Nope? Judy?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Ida, can we get a roll call on the minutes?
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Chesley?
Well, I was absent.
Oh, you can recuse.
Okay.
Yeah.
Graham?
Ida, you've got one more.
Graham?
Abstain.
Perfect. All right, moving on to item two, disclosure of site visits, ex parte contacts. Looks like we have a lot line adjustment. Lucas, you want to lead the charge on this one?
I'll lead the charge on this one.
Oh, sorry.
Did you want to do disclosure?
I did. Oh, we did, I'm sorry. Disclosure of expert, I, yeah, I have visited the site, I have no ex parte contacts in the lot line adjustment. As for item number three, I have to recuse myself because I do know the applicant. Anybody else?
I have visited both sites, I have no ex parte contacts.
I've...
I've visited both sites, no ex parte contacts.
Same here.
Awesome. All right, now we can move on to item two. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So this evening, the planning commission is charged with review and consideration of a lot line adjustment request for approval to merge two adjoining lots located at 928 and 936 East Ojai Avenue, yielding one larger lot. The lot line adjustment is required when proposing to adjust an existing property line. And pursuant to 10-311, 3.11 of the municipal code, the planning commission is the decision-making body for a lot line adjustment that exceeds a 10% increase or decrease in the area that's affected by the adjustment. If the increase or decrease is less than 10%, then the community development director would be the deciding authority. The square footage of the resulting parcel in this case is proposed to be increased by approximately 100% because the two adjoining lots are approximately the same size and they're looking to merge the entire site. Again, per section 10-311, lot line adjustments of the municipal code, the planning commission may approve a request for a lot line adjustment as long as the parcels that are resulting from the adjustment conform to the city's general plan, zoning regulations, and building laws. Provided, however, if the lot line adjustment results in a parcel that does not conform to the city's zoning regulations, the planning commission may still determine to approve the application, provided that the adjustment does not result in a greater number of residential developable parcels greater than existed prior to the adjustment, and also that the adjustment does not increase or make more onerous any violation of the zoning code. In this case, each parcel is currently substandard as to area, width, and depth. And parcel one, the existing parcel one, also includes a substandard front yard setback for the building that's on that parcel. Your staff report includes a side yard deficiency, however, that's an error because side yard setbacks are not required when the parcel is adjacent to another commercial property. So you can ignore that. Ultimately, the adjustment is going to result in a larger parcel that's less nonconforming. The single new parcel will still be nonconforming as to the depth and the front yard building setback. Notwithstanding noncompliance of the city's zoning code, the planning commission does have the latitude to approve the request because the resulting lot line adjustment will not result in a greater number of residential developable parcels, and no violations will become more onerous or increased by the adjustment. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the adjustment pursuant to the conditions of approval and the resolution that's in your packet. And we do have a building property owner here, it's the son, and he is part owner, in case you have questions for someone other than myself.
Awesome, thank you. I would like to acknowledge Commissioner Bennett. Welcome. Thank you, sir. So we do have the applicant. Did you want to come up and say a few words?
Ashwin, if you could come up to the podium and state your name.
You don't have to, but you certainly can if you want.
Ashwin Mills, representing Mills Family Trust. And, yeah, we're just looking to merge the two properties, increase the frontage, and simple as that, really.
Do you have plans for the property?
No, we're not planning on putting any kind of structure. Really, the idea is we'd like to put a garden on the, there's a vacant lot, 936 is a vacant lot, 928 has an existing structure, which is currently being used by Isakiah Full Moon in the back, and then the front would be a retail space. And the vacant lot would essentially be a garden, which we'd of course submit plans for, but that's our kind of intended use.
Okay, the front of the building is currently vacant, correct?
That's correct.
And so you're looking for someone to fill that space as a retail?
Potentially, but we intend on filling it ourselves. My family and I have a garden shop.
Ah.
Yeah, hence our desire to put a nice garden on the vacant lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Very cool. Thank you, appreciate that. Any public comments for, we'll open it up for the public? No?
No.
No public comments for item two? Ida, is there anybody online? For item two?
We do have a hand raised.
Is this for item two? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, my comment is for the next item on the agenda, Fox Street.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll just wait patiently for that. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we'll move on to, we'll close the public comment and move on to discussion. Guys have questions?
I don't have any questions, yeah. I'd actually be curious to hear, you know, why we might not want to do this, because to me it seems like a simple solution.
Yeah, I mean, it seems pretty clear and cut to me. I did have a question for staff, though, on attachment B, page one of one. So just to make sure I understand, the current lot line is that middle of the line, and it looks like the existing building obviously doesn't confirm with the side setback?
That's true, however, during my presentation, if the parcel next door on either side is a commercial or a non-residential parcel, then there isn't a side yard setback.
Oh.
And so that's why I said that was an error in the staff report.
Got it.
There is not a side yard setback issue.
Okay, but there is a front setback issue.
Yes, because the front yard setback is required to be 20 feet, and I, this is shy.
Slightly under.
Right. And so that's not going to change, obviously.
Right.
Right, that one will remain, and also the lots are 100 feet deep, and the requirement is for 120.
Got it, right. But this lot line adjustment will actually make it a little bit more confirming, conforming than it is right now.
It'll...
Still nonconforming.
Right, the width will now, the width and the area are now nonconforming, but they will be conforming.
Okay. Cool.
No, I have no...
I want to just really quick add in something, and it came up through the applicant's moment at the podium, and that is, you know, any plans that for the lot later will be coming through, would come through planning, and potentially the planning commission, depending on what kind of discretionary permit they request?
Yeah, we're strictly looking at, will the lot line adjustment result in a greater number of residential developable parcels? Obviously, that's not the case. Will the lot line adjustment increase or make any erroneous violations to the city's existing zoning regulations, which it doesn't?
Correct.
Okay.
I move acceptance of the lot line adjustment, LLA 24-002, by the commission.
A second.
Awesome. Ida, can we get a roll call?
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Good stuff.
I look forward to your garden.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Right here.
Appreciate you coming up. All right, so we will move on to item number three, and I have to recuse myself, so Judy will take over.
Okay.
Chair Twint. Trent, if you, I don't know, I just said that. If you could just briefly state the reason for the recusal?
Oh, yeah, I apologize. I'm personal, I have close friends with the Turner family. I've known Toby since, I went to school with her since grade school, so.
Okay. It's, at the end of the day, it's up to, it's up to the individual.
Yeah, yeah.
As to, yes?
I think it would be appropriate.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Then could we hear from the staff, please?
Thank you. Just wait for her. Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the planning commission. My name is Lucas Seibert, I'm the community development director here for the city of Ojai. The item we have before you tonight is a proposed tattoo parlor studio, which is not actually identified within our use chart. So this is a findings of similar use or similar use determination coming before this body tonight. Now, we've seen this previously, recently, actually with another project. I want to just briefly identify the format for which these similar use determinations are handled. The code actually allows for two different roadmaps. One roadmap has the director make that determination, given the scale and scope. The second is actually having it come before this body for determination, and then specific findings that go along with that. Because of the nature of this use and the considerations that are coming before with conditions, the director, myself, felt it was necessary to come before this body for That guidance is identified through attachment D as a part of the findings and justification. In addition to that, there is a resolution that's a part of this body for consideration tonight. That resolution includes also those findings and determination, as well as conditions of approval for this use. The similarity, just as a overview, the similarity typically with these findings of similar use, we're looking for a use within the use chart. This zoning is VMU or village mixed use. So when the, when staff or the community development department is looking at a similar use, the most obvious and consistent use within the use chart as a permitted use is personal services. Personal services themselves are, like, for example, a barber shop or a beautician parlor. Both of those uses have kind of a physical interaction with the clients. That use itself marries its, seems to have a closest marriage to the tattoo parlor that we're looking at tonight. With that, oh, and I should identify, the address here is 310 Fox Street. The building is family-owned, and it's been in operation that way for the last 45-plus When you're looking at personal services as a use that's similar, you then start looking at other development standards that apply to that as well. In this case, we're looking at parking that seemed to be the trigger on this site, and per the parking standards for the personal services use, parking standards actually require three parking spaces per station, and that would then equate to a minimum of four, the way in which code reads, so if there's only one station, it's a minimum of four parking spaces on-site. With the site plan that we've seen and being out on the site, there are the possibility of four or even potentially five parking spaces on-site. However, four of those or two of those would actually be in tandem to reach that requirement. This body actually has the authority to approve tandem parking spaces. So that's what we're looking at tonight as well. The floor plan is also provided here. I want to note, on the dais tonight is a revised, a slightly tweaked floor plan that does not include three stations, it actually includes two, but one in use. And the idea with this, and I'll have Hannah speak in regards to the Ice House use and proposed operation, daily operation when the time comes, but the idea is for really only one station to be in use, client-based and appointment-based. I'll have her speak a little bit more about that. And I wanted to note also, because of the restrictions in parking, that condition two has been identified to restrict the number of stations to be used at one time. So here, we'd say not both stations being used, because that would then equate to a parking standard of six. We're not seeing six on-site. So instead, what we're saying is four parking spaces seem to be appropriate and identified as available on-site, so one station can be in use at one time. So with that, staff does recommend approval, given the information here, the information provided in the draft resolution for your consideration, part of the findings, and then more specifically, the conditions of approval as well. So with that, if the commission has any questions, I could certainly answer them. I do know the applicant, Hannah, will want to get up and speak as well.
Do you have questions for staff first?
I have questions, but I think they'll be extinguished by the presentations.
Okay. Would you like to wait for Hannah to speak to us first? Okay. Ms. Green, would you like to come up?
Excuse me, if I can just amend what I said, I may want to ask some questions of staff after we hear the presentations.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I have a question before I start. I prepared something, but I also know there are other things to answer, so should I read what I...
Hannah, you are not limited by the three-minute rule of this, because you're the applicant, you can, you can address anything and everything.
Okay, I'll start with this then. Good evening, council members, neighbors, friends, everybody who's here today. As you know, my name's Hannah Green, I'm the artist behind Handman Inc. and owner of the Ice House Studio. I'd like to clarify, it's a body art studio, not tattoo, given that tattoos have a stigma against them, but body art is very, a new wave sort of thing. My connection to 310 Fox Street runs deep. This building's been with my family for over 40 years. It's where my, excuse me, my grandpa started his first business, so it's an honor to start my first business within the same walls. It's not some outside venture coming into town, it's homegrown. I was raised here, I'm currently raising my own kids here, and, yeah, I'm a self-employed female tattoo artist and mom, and building a small town in the town that built me, or building a small business in the town that built me. Ojai nurtures artists of all kinds, creating an art-centric enclave that embraces all forms of self-expression, body art being a new wave that's never been done before in this town. The Ice House Studio would expand Ojai's artistic footprint and affirm that art is art, whether it's on canvas, paper, or skin. Our community is forward-thinking and inclusive to all expressions of art and people, so I feel like this would be a perfect fit in addition to our town's growth. Approving the zoning for the body art studio isn't just about allowing a female artist and mom to own a small business, it's investing in Ojai's local economy and cultural diversity. At the moment, all clients must drive out of town to get body art, tattoos, everything, thus meaning their money goes elsewhere, not back into town. But with that, having a tattoo studio here, we bring more support to all of the businesses here in Ojai. Most clients plan a whole day trip out of getting a piece of work done, whether that's going to lunch, getting dinner afterwards, coffee, some people even go and get hike, or go on hikes after and explore the nature that Ojai has to offer. By allowing the studio, the council would set a precedent that Ojai can preserve its small-town charm while evolving with the times, and proves that we don't judge a book by its cover or a person by its skin. I hope that you will see my proposal comes from a place of true love for Ojai, and to welcome a new artisan craft into our town and support a small family. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I can answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
What is, I'm sorry, the chairman's not here. Oh, you're the chairman.
I am.
Chairperson, I'm sorry.
And I do recognize you.
Yeah, thank you. What's the average session length of a, of putting some body art on someone?
It definitely ranges. Most clients I take, I allot two hours, that way I can really in-depth talk with them, get a vibe with how they are, what they're seeking, and then perform the procedure, the body art, as well as connect and bond with them even after, making sure they have correct aftercare, and leave the tattoo session.
Right. And what is the, how many times do people come back for the same tattoo or an additional tattoo after the first one?
I have a good mix. My clientele's actually been growing gradually, which is awesome, but I'd say about 80% of the people I tattoo return for another one. I've worked on full sleeves for people, back pieces, and an extensive amount of memorial pieces that people build on.
Thank you. And it seems to me that the biggest cost you have besides your own, making some money for yourself in this, is reducing the cost overheads by having a second or third person in the studio. Can you make enough money to pay your rent and all the associated costs and be the only one there? Or is it...
As of right now, yes, I can. And, yes.
Right. But when does it become too, when do the costs become too much if you don't get permission for a second station? Not that I see any reason necessarily that you would have a problem. If you make it through today, I don't see why you wouldn't make it through tomorrow. If the cycle time is only two hours, it's not like you're going to have a crowd out on the porch waiting to get in.
No, and it's appointment-only, so I don't ever have walk-ins or people waiting. The longest session I should state I've done is eight hours, and that's morning until the early evening. But other than tattoos, I also do logos for, and branding for companies, custom illustrations, so I have art as well that I do on top of the tattooing.
Right.
Do you do it there? Would you be planning to do your other art?
Yes, I do.
There at the site?
Yeah.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, we've got a couple. Confirming, your family owns the building, right?
Yes.
So what would your rent be?
My rent that I pay right now is $1,300.
Okay, so pretty, yeah, pretty decent, but maybe like one or two sessions of a tattoo of a single one would pay your monthly rent? Yeah. I'd love to hear about, you know, the director spoke about, hey, maybe only one bed will be being used at a time. Do you mind just telling us more about that?
Yeah, so like most studios, they have guest spots, meaning people from basically around the world could come and visit and give other people tattoos. I spoke with the county, I have it set up as a second chair, it's more for sanitary purposes and privacy. That way, each artist who is there has their own set station sort of thing. Because I'm a mom, I work around their schedule, so if I did have someone there, I would work them around my own schedule as well to keep with the privacy of the clients, so it would only be one artist working at a time.
Then my next question is just around the parking issue. I care deeply about parking in Ojai. I did drive down the street today, right? There are a lot of cars.
Yes.
Parked on the side of the road. If we can get five parking spaces with that tandem in, you know, your location, that's great, but I'm curious, if there's one bed being used at a time, how many parking spaces do you think would be used for that single bed? Is it going to be one parking space, two parking spaces, or three, or potentially more?
Two, one to two. I also am teaming up with the mob shop, and they're installing a bike rack at the studio, and I'm going to do an incentive to give discounts to people who ride or walk their bikes to the studio and use our bike trails.
So is it fair to say that while the requirement, the legal requirement, might be three parking spaces per bed, in reality, it's actually one or two parking spaces being used?
There won't ever be more than two spaces.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
The plan, the plan that was submitted says six spaces off-street parking? Is that, how does that relate to what we're talking about here? Six spaces is if it's got two, if we end up having two, two stations in operation at the same time. No, I mean, on the drawing, though, isn't it saying that's what's being provided? So there's four spaces within that concrete pad area, and then two spaces in front of the business, and there's actually a space that could be provided along the south side as well. The only, the only concern is, is the spaces along the western part of this, of the building appear to be within the public right-of-way, or at least bridging the public right-of-way. I see, okay. So we're not necessarily counting those when you count them? Can't count street parking. Right, okay. Okay. This is just general. Yeah. So really, the parking spaces, which is the reason why I brought up the tandem piece, the tandem piece is really something this body would have to make determination on.
Okay. I do have one more question. Trying to be as impartial as possible. Have you spoken with your neighbors, what's the overall sentiment? You don't need to put words in their mouth, just gauging the temperature.
I've spoken with one who's opposed to it. He's supportive of the tattoo aspect of it, but not of the parking, which I fully understand. I know parking is a nightmare in town, as well as people's homes and, you know, not wanting people coming and going all the time. But majority of everyone else I've talked to is in full support and doesn't seem to be bothered or think that it'll become an issue.
Great, thank you.
Are there other tenants in this building?
Yes. I have, next to me, there's two people, and they're in support, and then Sam Hausman, he does construction, he's in another part.
Okay, so on the, if you're facing the building, on the left of the building, would that, all of that parking is to the, for the other tenants?
Yeah, to the spots.
Okay. Any other questions? One more?
Oh, I've got lots more. By the way, thank you for being here and standing up in front of us and helping us through understanding the issues. Is it a viable business with only one person doing the work, or do you really need to recruit a second person?
I believe it's viable with just one person. I, being a female studio, I wanted to give the opportunity to offer a seat to another female artist, but it is viable just myself.
Okay. And you plan no signage at all?
I don't currently have any signage.
No, that isn't the question. You don't plan any signage at all?
Plan?
Plan to put any signs up?
Oh, no, not outside, just on my own door. I have...
On your door?
Yeah.
So you plan a sign on the door?
Yeah, it's like a four... Yeah, it's like a four-by-four little sign that.
Little sign?
Yeah.
And would it have any illumination? I mean, is it, it's not gonna be open and closed and flashing?
No, it's just, um, an illustration that I did.
People are going to have to know how to find you.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Commissioner, if I could just, I'll.
I have some questions.
We.
I just wanna answer this, the sign question. I know Hannah's kind of answering it to say it's gonna be fairly simple and straightforward. It still would require compliance with, um, with our standards. The flashing lights, all those things are, are prohibited per, per code, so it.
No, I, I'm.
We would be working with her.
Dealing with the issue of being in a residential neighborhood, not so, I mean.
I just wanna clarify something. This zoning is VMU, Village Mixed Use. It does include residential uses, which is allowed within the VMU, but recognizing that the intent of that district allows for a transitional period. So you're gonna have residential uses also married next to commercial, uh, businesses as well. That's the whole purpose of the mixed, village mixed use.
I understand, but the barber shop up here has a non-illuminated barber pole, and I just wanted to make sure that there is no illumination.
Right, off of Signal Street, right?
It's on Signal Street, right.
My work's also very clientele-based, so I try to make as, like, a very calm environment for everybody. So there's no crazy bright lights, flashing things, loud sounds. It's very peaceful.
I, I think like, you know, one of the questions obviously is around sort of how it runs. Maybe you could just run us through a, a vision of what a week looks like there, you know? How many people are coming and that kind of thing?
Uh, my typical work week is, uh, Friday through Monday. And in that time, I could have one to two, I only give myself two clients a day maximum. Sometimes it's only one client a day. And I basically get there a bit before the client. I get set up, have some music on, and then, um, prepare for the tattoo session. They arrive, I meet with them, we talk. I prepare the stencil and then we begin the tattoo. Once the tattoo's finished, um, it gets cleaned, wrapped, covered. I instruct them on aftercare. They leave and I give myself about an hour between clients, so I can eat, relax, and wait for the next person and just repeat.
Nice.
Yeah.
And if you were, if there was also like a guest artist, would you, like, would you switch, would there be like a switch in and out that would get maybe more people in, in a day? Or would you think two, like maybe three or four, or what it is?
Um, most of the people that I have worked with in the past in, like, studios in LA, um, same thing, typically take two people. Most of the times, it's like flash days when you see, you know, larger crowds or things like that. Um, but again, very clientele appointment-based. And if I did have a guest artist, I would make sure that they would just take one of my days or a day that I'm not working there.
Okay. And do you, uh, is there any, like, thoughts around, cause maybe with the parking thing, about people joining, the person having the, you know, the work done, or is there, I don't know?
Yeah, their support.
Not gonna say limits or something, but yeah, yeah, right, they're a friend, a support person, whatever it is, or, you know, is there kind of like, how many? Probably as the artist, I'm sure you have an idea about how many people you really want in that space while you're doing it to keep your focus and everything.
During COVID, they made it so you could only have one support person with the guest, so I try to, I kind of abide by that same rule. And most of the time, um, if I tattoo best friends, they drive together sort of thing. So there's never, uh, a point where there's a bunch of cars coming. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Um, is there, okay.
Go ahead.
Is there, I see that you, you get a permit or a license to, to this. Is there, um, anyone who comes and inspects to make sure you're, you're, who does that? Is that a county function?
Yeah, so Ventura County does all inspections for anything body art. Um, Jeremiah is the main guy. He comes and inspects the studio as well as my blood pathogen. And that happens every six months for one, six months for another. And then he'll sometimes make, um, guest appearances
Right.
to make sure it's running according to.
Okay, and that's paid for in the context of that fee to get the license to begin with? Or do you have to pay a, an annual fee as well?
Um, an annual fee. There's, the bloodborne pathogen is every six months that gets repaid and then the license, um, every year.
Right. Thank you.
Could you, um, explain how your clients will understand where to park? Since this is tandem parking, are you, are you planning to put a sign out, or how will you direct them?
I got signs made that say parking for 310 Fox Street only. I don't know if I'm allowed to use those.
But if you have other tenants, I mean, I can see your clients not, from my visit today, I would not have known where to park.
Yeah.
And I assume that the other side of the building is for the other tenants. So how are you going to direct your clients?
In my booking, once it's confirmed, um, it sends them the address as well as how to prepare for the tattoo. And then it also gives them where they can park.
Okay.
It gives them instructions on it.
Good.
So you'll have electronic instructions and then a physical sign on those parking areas directing them to park there?
Okay, well, thank you, Hannah. Um, I think it's time to open the public hearing. We have cards. We have cards from Larry Steingold.
Uh, Larry Steingold, Ojai. Um, I think the usage is, is good for the VMU. It's not a problem. I mean, everybody gets tattoos. It's like a normal business. Um, they could be all week. I, and I bike up and down and I go to the Ojai Athletic Club and what have you. And on weekends, and when the theater's going on full blast and they have a big show, parking is tight on weekends, nice weather. The restaurants have complicated the issue. The neighbors, um, while they may like it, didn't buy into nine or ten more parking spaces on the street. Right, that's the, it's tempting, because you, right now you're looking at having three more, one per chair, right? Three?
Two.
Two more chairs.
Two chairs.
It's the enforcement of parking regulations as, to me, you know, is the, will the police come and ticket people who are blocking their driveways? There's no law on the books about parking in front of mailboxes, though everyone thinks there is. That should be, that should be part of the CUP, that the city can enforce no parking in front of mailboxes. Uh, also no, uh, events. The problem is not during the weekend. Everybody accepts parking. Weekend's an issue. It's during the week that these, that I think they're concerned about. That there's more, now there's ten cars, or six cars, or five cars in their parking. As long as they're enforcing parking laws, I think that, you know, would go a long way toward that. But that has to be done, because otherwise people park and they're just everywhere. So I think, and, and it's a good usage though for that. I mean, she has a business, it's running, it's good for the area, and that's not an issue. It's part of the VMU, so, but it's the parking, it's the enforcement and the making sure that it doesn't get out of hand. And a one-year review is fine, and then would it would go to a second chair at the end of one year and then another chair at the end of three years?
No.
Just one year?
Two chairs.
Two chairs. The parking issue.
Thank you, Larry. We have, uh, Greg Harris. Oh, wait a minute, that's virtual. Let's, let's get to the people in, onsite first. Jessica Valencia.
It's my first time. Good evening, Planning Commission.
Jessica, could you pull the microphone closer to your mouth? Thank you.
Okay. I am here as a resident and homeowner of 307 Fox Street, which is right across the street from the tattoo shop. Um, I have a brother-in-law that has, that owns a tattoo parlor. He had one here and then moved to Vegas because he wanted to make it bigger. So I know that tattoo parlors, um, and, you know, I like tattoos. I'm an artist too. But they do have events and they do go on very late. I know that his appointments go from eleven AM to midnight. Um, Fox Street is busy all the time, more on the weekends. Um, in my driveway, I've had people park where I can't get out. I've had people park, um, in front of my mailbox where the mailman won't drop off the mail. I mean, it's a big issue and, um, you know, I just wonder if, you know, the, the sheriffs are gonna be on top of it, having more businesses coming in. I mean, I do understand that, you know, I'm all for supporting women and women businesses, but they have to keep up with everything else, the parking, there's no sidewalks. So yeah, I definitely, you know, I am opposed to it. You know, um, it needs to be regulated. It needs to be, um, you know, so. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Jessica. Bill Miley.
Hello.
Hello.
In recent days, I visited the Ice House and met Hannah Green, business owner and clinician. I spoke with her about the Planning Commission's request. I know our planning department uses the term tattoo clinic. The Ventura County Environmental Health Division uses the term body art facility. When I asked or see about it, the issue of quote tattoos, body art is the term I used. But in the first seventy years of my, so of my life, tattoo was the term. Now body art is the term. I asked Ms. Green how our facility manages their client appointments. She said that drop-in, drop-ins are not allowed. All clients are scheduled in advance by phone or email. There's a special process for registration to properly arrange for body art to be done. Parking, because of the pre-scheduling requirement and process, it preamps multiple vehicles from needing parking on the property. Only those being served and waiting will be present. The property has a driveway which could be reconfigured for forty-five-degree spaces against the fence. I looked and I calculated that. Soon bike racks will be added for mechanical and electric bikes. Rumor says, is a joke, that in late eighteen hundreds, there were places for tying up horses. Ice House, right? The, okay, we talked about two clinical chairs. I believe that it needs two clinical chairs to make the business economically sustainable. I would suggest that that's what you consider. Because of the occasional spillover parking at the end of Fox Street by uses of the Ojai Valley Athletic Club, this becomes a problem at times. A small business like this should not be penalized, restricted from occasionally using of public parking spaces on Fox Street. Parking precedence. Three examples come to mind. Ojai Royalty on the corner of Fox and Ojai Avenue has no onsite parking and lots of business. Topa Brewing Company, the corner of Montgomery and Ojai Avenue, has no onsite parking and they were approved. They were also granted freedom from an in-lu and in-lu parking fee, which was a problem that the city council didn't catch in time to appeal it. The best example is going back a hundred years, the Ojai Arts Center, no parking offsite. Except when the arts center has a performance, the east end of Willow Street has unused spaces. In summary, our city, our city is now revising the general plan, including economics and tourism, and will want to support and add businesses like this small business. There's one key thing that I want to say here. The issue of a parking restriction under condition for maybe a year does not seem that it defies logic. Based on my reasoning, there is no need for a parking study as surely this business will not exceed parking use that other businesses in this town operate on using public spaces when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Toby Joe Green.
Thank you. I've done this so many times, I'm so nervous. My name is Toby Joe Graham. I am Hannah's mom. And I also help her with her art business, which includes printed art and books, which many of you may be familiar with from around Ojai. You may also recognize Hannah's name. She was the first female player on the Nordhoff football team, bringing home two CF rings. She's also volunteered countless hours of her time to the Girls Empowerment Workshop, the local organization that I run, which has provided free programs to the youth in Ojai for two decades. Hannah is now raising her own kids here and having her own small business. In her family building is instrumental. We as a community must empower the younger generations to stay here, work here, raise their families here, attend the schools here. We can get back to a town where the locals feel at home again. Here is a rare opportunity for a young local woman to own a business, I'm gonna cry, in Ojai and follow her dreams. Today, I would like to share a couple of key points along with some family history to demonstrate who you're supporting with your decision. Number one, the building, along with all of Fox Street, which Lucas has already spoke on, is already zoned for village mixed use. We're not bringing a new business into this area. This is an area that's already, this building, even specifically Hannah's space, has already been home to businesses for over forty years. We're not increasing. There's zero density increase with this decision. Um, this body art facility is an upscale, appointment-only, professionally managed, small business that provides personal services to individuals and is an extension of the historical and deep art culture in Ojai. Fox Street is already home to several businesses, including the car wash, the old Help of Ojai building, clothing repair shops, dentist, pottery school, a construction company, the Athletic Club, and growing up, it was home to the local bike shop and my dad's plumbing company. All similar businesses to a body studio, body art studio, in that they provide personal services to the people in our community. Another key point, this business will not only in, not, this business will not increase density by way of people or parking and will in fact embrace the spirit of village mixed-use zoning by encouraging clients to bike or walk to appointments by offering discounts on body art for those who do. We are also encouraging collaboration and community by teaming up with the mob shop to provide a bike rack and to push bike culture in our town. The current off-street parking is sufficient for this studio and includes, I know we said six, there's six in front if you do whatever you called when you stack them?
Tandem parking.
There's six spots if you do tandem parking, and then the person who resides on the other side has two of their own spots. And then there's three spots along the building that are actually off-street, even though they're along Fox Street. You're not parking on the street in those spots. I don't know if those count. There's sufficient parking for Hannah to have a client in there or one of her guests to have a client in there. Oh, that went so fast. The Ice House will have zero increased density, and I didn't get to get to the family history, but maybe another time.
Thank you, Toby. Are other, are there other people in the audience who wish to speak at this time who have not turned in a card? Seeing none, Ida could, oh, please come forward.
Come up there?
Yes. I'll ask her to fill one out.
Uh, I live at 312 Fox Street.
Excuse me, could you give us your name and when you're done, would you please fill out a card for the records?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, Roseanne Bonavito, and I live at 312 Fox, right next door. Um, for the past decade, my husband and I have lived there. We own the building, we own the house. We've done nothing but try and struggle through the parking deficiency in the neighborhood, on the street. Not only do we struggle with that, but we also try to warn any visitors and people that walk the street, because we don't have sidewalks on the street. They walk in the middle of the street or to the side of the street where the cars are parked. So it's very dangerous when it's very busy. In addition to that, we get a lot of traffic of the bikes on the trail. And we get a ton of traffic and parking. And we get a ton of traffic and parking for the Ojai Valley Athletic Club. So we don't park our car out in front all the time because there's no spots. We park in our driveway and in our garage. So we can't use our garage sometimes, and we can't use our driveway sometimes. We have difficulty when friends come and family come, just like Jessica across the street, and Lauren, who couldn't be here tonight, same thing. And we're the three houses that are immediately impacted by the Ice House. So whether it's one space, two spaces, three spaces, or four spaces, I can tell you right now, it's going to be a problem. And I don't think that it should, she, there's an issue with her being penalized for wanting to start a business, but I don't think that that's the best location. And I think in Ojai, there are plenty of other locations that are equally as nice, if not nicer. And people can bike to them, and people can walk to them, and people will be able to drive and park to them. And there is a commercial area right behind us that has lots of vacancies. I walk every day, three times a day, I have a dog. I walk all over the city, up and down the streets, lots of places where she could rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ida, could we check the people online?
Yes, we still have Greg, he can unmute.
Okay, Greg.
Hello, this is Greg. Can I start?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Planning Commission, Ojai City Government officials and resident attendees. My name is Greg Harris. My wife is Roseanne Bonavito, who just spoke. She's at the meeting now. We have been residents and homeowners at 312 Fox Street in Ojai for over a decade. I'm currently video conferencing this meeting because I'm out of town, but we did want to speak to you about the proposal to open up a tattoo studio at the Ice House located next door to us. As you know, this location is currently zoned in a way that does not allow a tattoo studio, and the business owner is requesting a zoning exception. We strongly oppose granting this commercial rental exception. Fox Street is a narrow residential with extremely limited parking, and the homes along the street rely on parking for residents, caregivers, and guests. Fox Street already experiences heavy overflow from the Ojai Valley Athletic Club, OVAC, which brings a steady flow of members and staff as well as visitors who park along the street daily and on weekends, including weekends. Adding a new retail business, especially one that serves walk-ins and overlapping appointments, would only increase congestion and strain on the city's limited parking capacity. A critical safety concern is that most of Fox Street has no sidewalks. Residents and visitors, seniors and young adults, families with small children, Athletic Club members and employees, as well as the Whale Tennis Academy students regularly walk along the street to reach the main road, as well as the Athletic Club and the Ventura Trail. We also see high volume of bicycle traffic from the Ventura Trail. More traffic, more cars circling for parking will raise real safety and congestion risks for pedestrians and cyclists. We believe customers will not use tandem spaces. They will use spaces available on the street, further adding to the congestion of Fox Street. It's also worth noting, despite zoning restrictions, the tenant has already been operating a business at 310 Fox Street. There's a Google website. In viewing the website previously, it appears that there will be three tattoo artists on site. That reference has taken, been taken down off the site, but that's what we viewed earlier. The property at 312 Fox Street currently serves as a multi-unit residential or live-workspace great, with great neighbors. Their residences help address Ojai's affordable housing problem. Converting it to a retail space would worsen the parking issues, alter the residential character of Fox Street, and further reduce available housing. Ojai has always worked to balance supporting local businesses and protecting the safety and integrity of the neighborhoods. I respectfully ask the Planning Commission and the city manager to uphold the existing zoning and deny the requests for an exception at 312, at 310 Fox Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Hannah, I have a card for you, but I assume that you have already stated your piece.
Just to readdress some of the things again about the parking and the assumption that it is a free-for-all body art studio, it's not appointment-only. I really want to confirm everyone knows that. I don't know where on the website or anything says that there are three artists currently working there. It's just me, will only ever be me unless I have a guest. Yeah, so I don't think I should also be penalized for the overflow of other businesses when that is just Ojai. Ojai doesn't have very much parking anywhere. We have the entire main street where there's plenty of businesses that operate. There are hair salons, there are barber shops, there are beauty technicians that don't have the same required parking that I do. And then, again, to state about the 312 House, I've spoken with Greg. I haven't spoken with his wife, but I appreciate them bringing up their concerns with me, and I had good conversations with them. So I hope that with this in the future, they can learn to understand that it's not a free-for-all. It really is a professional body art studio, and I take that very strong to heart.
Thank you. I just have, parking is a serious issue in Ojai.
Yes.
So like, I'm going to just continuously double down. I'm going to ask the department about this as well. So can you tell me the existing number of parking spaces for this parcel in front, along that little driveway piece that's there, how it's split up between the different businesses that are operating in this building?
So when you go into the building, there's a driveway and has six spaces. And then along that, which would be considered off-street but aren't actually in the street. So if you drove by, you would actually be able to fit a car. There's two. You could fit three if you have really tiny cars. And then next to that, two more.
And how many would be dedicated towards the tattoo or body art?
Solely two.
Solely two parking spaces? And if we change this to tandem, how would that increase in number of parking spaces, if at all?
I would just still keep it to two.
Still open to two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And is there extra parking that you can, you know, take over for that complex, so that you end up having three or four?
I know I could communicate with other people and work around schedules. I'm not sure when the other people park there, but typically, it's just the residents that are there next to me and then me.
And so you're going to be limited to the two parking spaces? And if you have a guest come, there potentially is going to be an overflow situation?
No, because I wouldn't be working. I would make sure that if there is a guest there, they're on their own schedule and I'm on my own, and we wouldn't cross over.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
I'm Tessa Turner.
Again, would you please fill out a blue card and give us your name and address?
I'm Tessa Turner. I own that building for over 40 years. The business that Hannah's intending to move in there will be the most lightweight business that has ever been in that part of the building. And I know our new neighbor, I haven't known them, they say they live there, but they live there only part-time. And I believe the house has been a vacation rental. And so that's a business in itself which you have to address.
Excuse me, but we would like to have you address just the commission, and we would like the audience to maintain silence. Thank you.
Okay, well, there has never been any parking issues there with all the businesses that there are. The parking issue that we have now is the Ojai Valley Bracket Club, Athletic Club, who has expanded their membership exponentially since COVID. That's the problem with the parking. It's not Hannah, and it has never been anybody who's worked or lived at Fox Street. It's the Athletic Club, it's their overflow, and it will never be Hannah. And we have four spots along our street, and they are off-street. People don't park in the street, they park along the building. And then, of course, you say it's a little driveway, it's a rather large driveway, you know, and it accommodates everybody, including Hannah's two, possibly three cars. So don't confuse Hannah's business with the exaggerated parking issue.
Okay, thank you, Tessa. Okay, and with that, we will close the public hearing.
You are the chair here, so.
We're done.
One more thing?
No, I'm sorry. We've already extended beyond the number of cards that we received. So I am, yes?
There is a card right here, and this woman has not spoken. You could accept that card.
Yeah, and I would also just confirm with the woman who spoke previously, you've already had your three minutes, which allotted to every speaker, and so it would be fair to allow you to come up and continue to speak, because we'd have to go back through and allow everyone else to continue to speak. So that's why we're going to deny your request and allow this person to speak.
Okay, but I will allow this one card. That's it.
Yeah, I believe you have to accept all of them regardless of time.
Thank you.
Not really.
Hi.
No, okay, go ahead.
Please. My name's Sunday Rylander. I'm a resident, been here 27 years, raised my children.
Please speak into the mic.
I own a business downtown called Sundays, worked on the skate park with many people here for many years, served as chairman of Park and Recs for many years. And I'm also a friend of Hannah's and her family. I've known her since she was a little girl, quite remarkable woman. It's quite an honor that she has proposed this business in the city of Ojai to be your first tattoo shop. You couldn't ask for a better, more responsible, honorable person. I, it's, I get all excited about this because working on the skate park, skateboarding and tattooing, two at one point non-mainstream sort of things, very mainstream. The first tattoo shop in the United States was in 1870. Okay, it's 2025. This is not new. It's very important. I would like to look at it like an art form, and, sorry, I'm shaking. I think we need to look at this as an art city, this is just a form of art. You might like pastels and you like sculptures. This is important to some people, especially culturally. And I believe it's on us to make sure that this is available for people and do it in the best practices and best ways, and Hannah would be that person for you. You're talking about a legitimate businesswoman that cares deeply for people, that does incredible artwork. I've seen it, I've seen and heard people who love it, just so much integrity. So it's a great partnership for this to be your first tattoo shop. Because I've been to a lot of tattoo shops in my life, and they're very, they're all different, and that's great. But this, to be honest with you, is a really great first example for you. But I don't think this is, this is nothing to really worry about. It's very normal. Every city has tattoo shops. So I welcome your openness to providing this opportunity for this business in the city of Ojai. It's time, and just like we let all the other businesses and wine shops and beers and art stores and, I mean, the gamut, we need everybody. We need all these point of views, we need all these people, we need something for everyone, not just few people and their opinions. So anyway, sorry, I'm shaking. I just really wanted my moment to speak and share my point of view, because I know that when people come up here to speak, they're speaking for probably 100 people. And people can't always make it, and it's important to really listen to people. Where you are the liaison for the people. So it's your decision-making to represent the people. So anyway, I just wanted to share that. I think you have a great partner in this first experience. I wouldn't worry about parking. My daughter lives in the same building. Like, there's no parking issues. I'm over there. There's a lot of other businesses going on on the street, too. So if there are issues here and there, it's probably all kinds of things. There's significant parking. This is a one-on-one experience. When you go to get a tattoo, it's not five people, it's Hannah and this person who's doing this of their free will. It's not a parking lot full of people, it's one-on-one. It's like when you go to the doctor or whatever you do with your free time. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's not like a store where 20 people all of a sudden are in the shop. It's a one-on-one. So anyway, thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Sunday. Public hearing is closed, and the discussion comes back to the commission.
May we ask the department questions? Great, yeah. Going back to parking, just continuing to hammer this issue, I've heard from a number of people, there's going to be three, you know, different beds, like, there's a diagram that shows where there could potentially be more than one bed. But I really want to just confirm with you, Director, what we're voting on tonight in this resolution, unless she meets a parking requirement, the applicant will not be able to have more than one, you know, tattoo bed being used at a time.
Correct. So the way in which, and it's spelled out in condition two, it was something that I noticed, and once I took a look at our parking standards as it relates to barber shops and beauty shops, is it is one station for every three parking spaces, but then it also has a caveat that requires a minimum of four parking spaces. So onsite, you've got to identify four parking spaces. On the revised plan that's before you, not necessarily the plan that's part of this packet, the part of the packet shows three stations, three stations that are potentially active at any point in time. There's no restrictions in terms of the hours of operation, client base. Instead, what we have here is a limitation in terms of one station being used at a time. So if, in the future, Hannah does want to hire an additional body art professional, I'm trying to work with the words here and educate myself, that may require us to revisit the parking. It all depends on the way in which the business looks to operate. So if it is activating two stations at the same time, that's when we're triggering the parking relook and reevaluation. There's a lot of different ways in which that can be potentially addressed. That's a conversation that we would be having with a business owner, and then, you know, evaluating, which is typical with businesses that are looking to either expand or modify the way in which they operate. So that's, that's kind of the roundabout way of discussing the parking situation.
And so, so I have like two more questions here. Following up on that, we're making a decision tonight that would be an exclusion, an exception to the four parking space requirement for one bed, given the applicant has said, hey, there's really going to only be two spaces for, you know, my, my part of the business.
Yeah, so they need to still identify, and what we're showing here is that for the one station, it would still have the four parking spaces on site. What's interesting about this is it's a fairly strict parking standard, I would venture to say. Other cities don't necessarily have quite a strict parking standard. Standard's still the case, though. So we've got to look at it from one station equals four parking spaces on site, not offsite parking, not unless we do some sort of evaluation that's not a part of what we're talking about here tonight. We're looking at the physical parking spaces and whether or not there's enough on site.
And then my last question, trying to be impartial. Look, we have two different sides on this issue. Some people are for this, some people are against this, they've made that very clear. For the people who are against this, how are we, as a community, as a planning department, as a city, going to ensure that there really is only one tattoo bed being operated at a time, to make sure that this is a fair exchange between the amount of parking that's being used on that street or in that space, and, you know, Hannah being able to have her business?
So a couple of things, and I think it's to, to the points that I've, I've heard from the immediate neighbors that have concerns. The concerns are there. In terms of there not being on, in terms of there not being sidewalks in the area, there's a lot of streets in this, in this area and the city that don't have sidewalks. People walk in the middle of the street. When I first started, when I first moved here in 2019, and I saw that, I was like, this is crazy. It's the way in which Ojai operates, it continues to operate, and we're not, we're not seeing an issue with that. The fact that the use itself is so close to Ojai Valley Trail is a benefit to businesses within this area, 100%. But knowing that there are parking concerns and overflow that's happening from a business that's already existing and continues to expand, that, I understand that concern. That concern is definitely. That concern is definitely vetted. But it's not a concern that necessarily should be burdened by a proposed business that's looking to have those parking spaces onsite, at least showing it by the way in which this proposal is. This proposal came in originally at three stations. The conditions of approval are identifying one station operation. So, we're shrinking it down. If Hannah is looking at, or the business owner is looking to expand in the future, we can evaluate those options, but more than likely, we'd come before this body again.
Thank you.
I have a question, Steph. Will the decisions made here be extensible to any other VMU area? Or is are we defining that a VMU now includes body art or tattoo studios?
Correct. By doing this, any future uses that are looking to go into the VMU that are body art, they're now held to the standards of the parking. They're held to all the other standards as personal services would apply.
That's my question. This is not about this location. It's certainly not about the character of the person who's doing the work or their artistic capabilities. It's about, what are we doing? Are we extending the uses for VMU? And will, because otherwise, we're going to be dealing with, well, you know, you've already done it, we've already done it in one place. So, you know, that barber pole that I, I look at when I walk by could be turned into a, a body art place, which is, which is fine, maybe. But, we're making a decision here not for one specific spot zone.
Yeah, and this, this is the first body art studio that's, that's coming into this city. But it's not the first time that there's been a request or an interest in it. This is the first time that an individual business owner is actually taking it forward. Several times, actually, I've identified to those individuals the process, which comes before this body.
Could, could we recommend doing what's been done by the creation of an overlay? So that there's an overlay, as there is on Bryant Street, for the two, for the three pot shops that are over there? The, the city created an area for, for that.
The retail and the manufacturing and the laboratories, yes. The overlay piece is a, that's a zoning code change, general plan amendment. Both of those discretionary, would come before this body, but would also go before city council. And that's typically a direction from city council on matters of that, of that nature. So, you could make a request. This body could then say, yes, let's take that request to city council, and then city council gets issued that file.
That's my point. Is, is it a more?
Still a separate issue from what we're talking about here tonight.
Well, it's intertwined with it. It's one thing to say, yes, we're going to accept body art, but we're going to look at the areas of the town where that might be inappropriate.
Yes. You could make a separate motion, also a part of this, to send something to, to city council as a request. Yes, you could do that. That would require the majority of this body, though, to do that. It would require the majority of this body to do that.
Oh, yes, of course. Although, we haven't voted on anything yet.
We have not.
Anything would require a majority of the body, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can, can Hannah respond to one thing that came up, which was a question about, or there was a sort of a, an assumption that there might be events related to this space? I think might be helpful that for you.
Again, I take tattooing very seriously, and I make it an experience versus just someone getting ink. So, it's appointment only. If I ever did have an event, again, it would still be appointment only. There wouldn't be walk-ins, people just wandering in. I would have set times that they would be allowed to come.
I, I have a question, if I, if I may, just while you're up there, going to the hours of operation. At the moment, you say you're not, you're not envisioning any kinds of specific hours of operation, because you intend to operate it yourself.
I don't go past 6:30. I'm still breastfeeding. I got two kids, so I'm home.
Right, but you're, let's say you decide you're going to move someplace else, or you're going to, and you want to sell your, your business to someone, and they have a model like one described earlier, where there might be two artists who are working there, and one of whom wants to work till 11 o'clock at night. And since we haven't approved any time window, what's to stop that from happening? There's no...
It's probably a question more geared towards me. And more specifically towards co-compliance. So, if there's noise issues that are happening after 10:00 PM, those noise standards drop significantly. So, a breach to those standards would be much easier after 10:00 PM, like, for, for instance. So, you're playing loud music, the windows are open, and everybody's hearing it. It's likely to be a violation. Hannah, as a business owner, has already identified hours of operation of?
I don't start until 10:30, and I'm done by 6:30. I don't.
Is there any reason why we couldn't limit it from 10:30 to 6:30? We ask people who are opening other forms of business what their hours of operation are, and we, we impose them, and is, is...
For our council, I'd love to hear about time manner and place restrictions, and how the First Amendment may limit our ability or grant us the right to be able to place a time restriction on this business.
Right, so in terms of time, place, and manner restrictions, as you may have seen in the staff report?
Is your microphone on? Thank you.
With respect to time, place, and manner restrictions, as we've seen in the staff report, it's been identified, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has identified that tattoo artistry is a protected First Amendment right of expression. And so, going back a moment to some of the comments that we've heard about the particular uses of the property. So, to think, so I think it's important for the commission to understand that it, to there, to take a position that it's not a currently permissible use is certainly something that would potentially contemplate a banning of tattoo artistry, which may implicate the First Amendment. And so, that's why the staff report is seeking to find the similar uses, just because it's not expressly stated within the zoning code. I think that's an important item to recognize, is that it is certainly a, a use that is protected under the First Amendment for that. In terms of time, place, and manner restrictions, you're certainly looking at whether or not, so reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions can still be imposed on protected First Amendment activities. And then it's ultimately whether or not it's still providing those avenues for which the activity could be taking place. And then I think the, the, one of the big items to consider is whether or not the restrictions that are being placed on this particular business are any more onerous or restrictive than we would see with other forms of businesses. So, for a, a 6:30 stopping point, I would query whether or not there's other businesses that are limited to operating beyond 6:30?
And I think to that, if I could just add on to that, to that point, remember, it's personal services that we're marrying this to. And those personal services tend to be barber shops and beauty shops. So, what we're seeing is our, are the hours of operation limited within those uses themselves? And I would argue no. Which is the reason why there are no hours of operation limitations here. Typically, with, with the hours of operation that you'll see before this body are with conditional use permits, which have certain restrictions and certain concerns tied to them. If it's beyond the 10:00 PM and it's a violation of the code, then yes, there are, there are measures by which we can take. But assuming that that use is going to be in violation, our code is there to react and not be proactive from that standpoint.
And to the point on noise, I think really, you know, whether there's a consideration on is, is a particular time an arbitrary point that we've decided on, or whether or not the government actually has a particular important interest that's being served by the restrictions that's being placed on the particular business?
Actually, I'd never thought about the, about the time, I'm sorry, the sound issue or noise issue, as you call it. I not, I was not thinking that that was a problem. I was just thinking about coming and going in a neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood, and when do the people in a VMU want things, want things to be relatively quiet? I realize that the city, and it's really a broader parking issue, has allowed both the athletic club and Ojai Roti to exist with no, with insufficient parking in the ca, in one case, and no parking in the other case. So, and those generate much bigger crowds than a small shop that has one or maybe two studio spaces in it. The idea of, of constraining that activity in the face of what else is on Fox Street from O, you know, the two ends that I've just mentioned. It seems like you're, you're pounding on the little guy. And, I mean, I don't mean you, and I don't mean us, but, but we have got the tool to do something here, and we're trying to use it, but somehow, and the, the other part which bothers me in this, and I'm trying to find a solution for it, is actually, I'd prefer to see the application for two, two stalls and adequate parking for two stalls, which may be four or five slots. It's certainly, it doesn't need nine slots, or even six slots, but it probably could get by with four or five. And so, you know, is there a way to make that work and put up some signage for parking, which requires you to have a, essentially, a parking permit there, so that you know who's supposed to be there and who isn't? So, you, you, when you get your, your, your appointment guaranteed, you also get a, get to print out a, a parking permit that you put on your dashboard. And, you know, you announce the fact that these, the slots are available only to people who have, are displaying a permit. I don't know if that's possible, but, I mean, am I encroaching on the whole concept of parking management, parking problem mitigation?
I think the, the concern that I'm seeing there is that we're identifying an issue without actually seeing the issue at hand. A lot of times...
I've been up and down Fox Street trying to find parking.
The reason why I'm saying, the reason why I'm saying that is, a lot of the times, what ends up happening is you end up doing some sort of analysis. So, the analysis hasn't been done. You're assuming that there's potentially a solution without actually identifying what the true problem is. There is an inherent understanding of a problem regarding the parking, but for this particular business and partic, this particular, particular use within this particular area, you've got to do the analysis. And one of the reasons why the, the restriction has been identified within the conditions for one station in operation is that she opens, begins operation, and then if there's interest in expanding it, then we do the analysis, and we talk about the different options that, that the business owner has. Placing restriction without actually having the business in operation is a dangerous precedent that I would recommend this commission not lean into.
Thank you. And just to go back to what you said earlier, just confirming, we've limited and reduced the scope of the, you know, number of beds to one bed because there are the required number of parking spaces for that single bed?
Correct.
Great.
Yes.
And Jamie, it is a VMU, so I mean, it's, I think that, you know, that's, you know, you're, you're commenting a little bit like it's like a residential, but it's, it's, it's a mixed use. And so, that sort of mix is going to be, you know, inherent to, to that area. So, there is going to be a different makeup. And it does seem like a lot of these concerns are, I guess, where we have to tackle, I mean, this is discussion, right? We have to tackle this stuff, you know, obviously, like, case by case, but it obviously is, this kind of larger issue seems a little unfair, considering everything else we've been sort of presented with and seen that's very above board, and there's kind of clear directions on most of it, to have some further onerous statement on it, when really, the issue is a larger issue that we do have on our list to, to try and tackle in some more, you know, kind of...
Well, we got, see, by saying yes, we dodge the issue. If there's only one, if there's only one station. We don't dodge it when we get to two. Then you've got to say, all right, where does, where does that come from?
Yeah, agreed. Yeah.
If...
Wait, we're talking about one.
If we use tandem parking or accept tandem parking in this instance, are we setting a new standard?
Tandem parking has been brought before this body before.
Okay.
And evaluated, so.
And, and considered acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything as part of our motion to ensure that there's tandem parking?
It is not mentioned as a part of the conditions. So, probably making that a motion, we can add that to either the conditions or with, or beef up the findings as a part of it as well.
What's the cost to the applicant to do tandem parking?
There is no cost.
Perfect.
As long as the parking is provided onsite and not on street.
Right. I don't think I saw it in the motion, in the resolution, I mean, Lucas, but I did note, in the description, you do note that it's like no appointment necessarily for the, so I think that might have been a little point of confusion, since clearly it's...
So, I would turn to Hannah and ask if that's a part of her business practice that she's wanting to move forward with. It was loosely described.
I see.
She's making it sound very firm in terms of how she's wanting to operate.
Yeah.
If she's willing to do that as a part of the conditions, that could be a part of what, what we make, what you make as a motion tonight.
I see.
Are we increasing the number of parking spaces if we do tandem parking?
No. What you're doing is you're, you're essentially accepting the fact that a tandem exists there right now as a, a non-identified use as, as, as it relates to parking. Here, you're actually affirming that tandem parking at this location is allowed.
No.
(laughing) It's like a, think of it as a non-conforming use. The non-conforming use exists, but guess what? Now, you as a body are saying, guess what? That use, we agree that that use is a part of the success of the business in the area.
And I get that part, but it, it just goes back to, hey, we're not enforcing parking anyways, so.
I get it.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Discussion?
Well, I, I go back to the issue of creating a, an overlay. Or what you're saying is, for any, any VMU, we can have this, this new use.
So, there's two ways that this could be addressed. If the full commission is interested in doing that, you could make a separate motion tonight.
The majority, not the full.
Majority, yes. You could make a separate motion to, to take this forward to city council for a future discussion. Or, we have a third item tonight that's talking about the different items that we're talking about when we do our joint meeting with city council.
Yeah.
You could talk about adding that as well. So, there's two different ways in which this could be addressed. If you do the second piece, you can talk about it more. Here, you are missing one of the commissioners as a part of the conversation. I leave it to the commission.
I'm going to motion to approve the resolution as is.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Ida, could we have the vote?
Murphy?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Graham? Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Congratulations. I feel like parking is number one now.
I have a, that's what I was thinking.
We're back to a ranked order for our, our items.
We brought that in the last time we were here.
He said it had to be ranked.
Wait a minute for, for the chair to be seated.
Lucas, I think we need a better way to handle the cards.
Yeah, it's in a, it's in a breadbasket. That's kind of interesting. You can talk about it offline.
Okay.
I guess, I guess no one wants to stay to talk about discussion items? Sure, yeah, 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 hand it in.
Okay.
This is information. Thank you so much, everybody.
We'll make copies and get this to the commission.
Okay.
These should be signed.
All right.
These should be signed with, with her name on it, because otherwise, we have no idea.
Oh, it's, that's, that's...
Sorry, I missed it.
We have no idea what the point... We have no idea what the point, whose point of view wrote it. Is this-
I'll tell you, who brought it up.
Oh, yeah, nobody is on it.
It's not signed, I didn't talk about it.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to item four, uh, which is proposing topics, um, to discuss at the future joint meeting with city council. Um, and I believe we have some items here that we've already outlined that we want to talk about, and we brought this up a few times.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed that you added a couple more to the design guidelines. Um, did you want to elaborate a little bit?
Elaborate as far as elaboration.
And they're staying at the top of the list.
I continue to put, but the, I will admit that I continue to do that because I recognize that I want to make sure that we stay in the good graces of HCD in terms of the, the bits and pieces that are required of us, um, at least to, to attempt to move forward, um, and, and get some decisions on some of these pieces. Uh, one of them is the objective design standards, which is baked into our housing element as one of the, um, um, one of the, one of the projects that we've, or programs that we've identified, uh, one of the nineteen. The second one is one that this body actually brought forward as a discussion piece and potentially could have additional feet tied to it into the future. Um, number two is the parking and hearing tonight and lots of discussion, uh, it could end up moving to number one, or at least a tie for number one to just recognize that the two of them are neck and neck, um, in a drag race for the end, right? So, I get that and understand the, the concern and certainly the, the optics in terms of explaining parking as the way in which our code currently is, is written and some of the nuances that our code has, one would argue, some of those parking standards seem a little bit outdated in terms of how we evaluate. I mean, I'll, I'll admit, looking at the parking standards for the item we just talked about, I thought it was a little excessive for one, one station, um, but I've also seen some of the parking standards where I look and I say, that seems a little under-
Yeah.
-the radar. So there is some, the, there is some confusion and some flexibility, I think.
The balance is a little-
Yeah, the balance, so-
I think, uh, oh, go ahead, continue.
For the parking piece, I've said this a couple of times, um, we've done parking studies. The only thing is, is those parking studies were in the nineties and, and the early two thousands. Both of those were focused where? In the downtown district, because that's really what everybody was concerned with. Uh, broadening that's, that perspective and maybe even going out to the four square miles just to do a full evaluation. Residential, all, all, really kind of all uses inclusive, um, and maybe even doing like a full reboot or evaluation of the parking standards is probably what really needs to be, um, discussed. And this is the body by which to do that, at least in terms of reviewing, um, any sort of, um, technical documents and then just doing the analysis that goes along with that as well. So, it's the deep dive, it's the good work that this body is charged with.
Um, quick question on the, on the parking. I know last time we talked, we were gonna get real focused on, uh, potential solutions, um, for city council, uh, just so we don't get sidetracked and, you know, go off the rails, because I know it's easy to, to talk philosophically about things, but I would like to have some sort of concrete thing that we can move forward to, if that's possible. I know that there's been, a lot of solutions have been brought up. We have talked about, you know, putting in parking meters, talked about-
Can you speak to the mic?
Oh, sorry. We've talked about enforcement of parking, which is obviously something that just came up tonight.
Yeah.
Um, which I don't think we do a good job of, you know, so if we can come up with some solutions to provide city council, I think that'd be amazing.
Okay.
And I know we've talked about it.
Like concepts, like parking-
Yes.
Solution concepts.
Yes.
I highly, highly, highly want to advise that we don't give a single solution.
No, 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 not one.
No, I understand like, hey, A, B, or C, but they need to be interwoven when it comes to parking, because if you're going to do meters, then we need to make sure we're also giving residents who have like-
Yeah, yeah.
You know, a, a permit so that they don't have to comply with the meter, they can park downtown, but also use some of that money for our roads and also maybe procure additional free public parking, like, spaces downtown, so that we can help continue to alleviate traffic. Because the point of like, um, a meter is to actually generate revenue. It's to like punish people for like staying more than two hours. But that doesn't resolve the actual issue.
So does it help businesses?
Yeah. Result, like resolving the issue is providing more parking and holding businesses accountable for their parking designation.
Well, I'd also say that there are solutions that are not necessarily parking related. I mean, there's a way in which we think about the urban forum and development of this town that can, you know, lower the need for driving, therefore parking as well. So, I think it's a broad topic.
Yeah. I would just like to not say, hey, parking meters is a solution, but come together and say, couple these things together and we'll have-
I would like, yeah, if we can have a package or option, something that we can discuss in concrete versus philosophically waxing hours about parking.
Right. So, like a wagon wheel, we could just keep circling the issue, right?
Yeah, we just keep circling around, around, around.
Here's, here's, so hear me out here, just as a, as like steps towards kind of the bigger conversation that we're talking about here.
So I'd like to guide the conversation, you know what I mean?
You end up doing some sort of an RFP or an RFQ to have somebody come out and do an evaluation. And with that evaluation, and this would be an RFP and RFQ that would come before this body to consider, to ensure that we're, we're evaluating the concerns and they're identifying, um, options as it relates to what our code currently says and what's missing, right?
Right.
Those, those things are, are things that this body would then get a chance to get their hands dirty on and influence, uh, the RFQ/RFP process. And obviously this, myself as well as staff would be coming forward with something like that. If we do it in that manner and ask for a blessing and potential financial, um, aspects to that, that's a lot easier than just kicking the tires, talking about the, the, kind of the specific pieces and then the pros and cons to each of those.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
You evaluate that through a third party coming in and talking professionally about it.
Well, and, and a recommendation by a third party of, um, what process to follow, because it's, they're all, they're all gonna have trade-offs, and so, um-
Yeah, so you find one that is, is proven, right? So, I mean, that's, so you evaluate, clarify, verify, and, and it comes before this body. So, if you do that, you really are getting your hands dirty, but it's good work that you're doing here. The parking, the parking piece is something that continues to come up.
Mm-hmm.
Probably, out of one, out of the two meetings that we have a month, probably one of those meetings we're talking about parking, right?
And I've been, I've been doing, well, I've been on this board for, for this body for a little over four years, and it seems like every other meeting we talk about-
And some of those I felt frustrated, because when I'm explaining it to you, you're like, so what's the solution? I'm like, I don't, it's frustrating, the code's not clear. Sorry.
Yep, and yeah.
There's, there's some clarity that's just not there, so.
Are you s- just saying that we go to the city council and we say, hey, get a parking study done by like a third-party consultant, and then we can come back and discuss what those potential options are before they make a decision?
Correct.
Easy.
Doesn't that make sense?
Yeah.
Do we have to wait for the meeting for that?
So-
Probably have to.
Totally agree.
If I could write a letter-
We voted today.
You could.
Yeah.
Actually, you could, with that item, just push it forward.
We voted today.
Here's, here's what I-
Like, may, we could make a recommendation today, and as we all, majority vote, and push that suggestion to council as a recommendation.
Yes.
To look at the RFP.
Because I'd rather not wait till we meet with them and then do that, and then we have to wait for the parking, you know, um, study and then think about it and then meet again to actually talk about it.
Well, then, the only bad thing about us pushing a recommendation is then they have to put it on their, their agenda.
We have to agendize it. I, I'm not-
They could punt.
-gonna sit here and pretend that it's gonna come before, um, we have our joint meeting. This, the, the second piece that I want to talk about is the joint meeting is more than likely gonna be happening in June, and the reason why is because you're the second commission that gets to meet with them.
Right.
Um, HPC's already had their, their show, now you get to have your show with them. So, I anticipate that that'll be the first part of June.
Okay.
But we're working on a, a date, so just stay tuned for that.
Okay. Should we vote to make a recommendation during that meeting, or can we just make that recommendation during the meeting?
When you, so, for the joint meeting, you'll be getting direction from council at that, at that meeting, and it's very intentional and very-
I mean, I know parking is a bit, you know, it's high on their list as well.
Oh, yeah, always been.
So-
You're seeing some of the goals, kind of reflecting that at this point.
So is there any harm in, I mean-
Taking it forward?
Just making the recommendation now and, I don't know, it's like-
I think you could make a recommendation now, and that way, when, when you have a joint meeting, be like, we've already-
Agree with you, let's do it now.
-talked about this as a part of the, the topics for discussion, and we feel strongly about it.
So we could make, uh, a recommendation to have staff draft a, an RFP for consideration at this joint meeting?
Yes, you could do that. Here's the thing, with this, because it's staff time and financials that are tied to it-
Oh, we have to get their approval.
You've gotta get their approval for that.
So you're, we're asking for, we're recommending that they consider, that they vote on-
We're recommending-
-staff being able to prepa- prepare an RFP-
Yes.
-to put out for-
Recommending this.
And they could do that at the joint meeting?
So, let's do it.
Yeah, so at the joint meeting, which is similar to what happened with HPC, there was a couple of items that were, that had financial pieces tied to it, and they gave the green light for those.
Okay.
So.
So, um-
Let's do that.
I'll make that motion.
Well, first we gotta, well, so we're making the recommendation to have city council, um-
Authorized.
Authorized staff to draft up an RFP for consideration at a future meeting. Is that fair?
Just to draft an RFP?
Yeah, draft an RFP.
There you go.
Okay.
You're moving that?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Ida, can we get a roll call? Yes.
Chesley?
Oh, wait, hang on, hang on. Uh, we do have speaker cards, I totally apologize.
You guys are jumping a little bit.
That's five.
This is-
Item five.
Item five.
Uh, item four.
This one says item four.
No, I, I totally apologize.
You wanted to speak about this, this item, right?
You guys want to talk about this item?
Yeah.
Okay. So before we vote, yeah, if we can have Bill, well, we'll talk, yeah, Bill first and then, and Larry, you'll go second. Sorry about that, guys.
Hi, um, I'm taking my age as an opportunity to criticize you.
Uh-oh, incredible.
I'm ninety-two. I am displeased by your not discussing the recent decisions that relates to the last item, by previous planning commissions on giving the Topa Topa Brewery permit without any public onsite parking, also Ohio Royalty, giving them a permit to operate without any onsite parking, or even asking what their reasons were and not considering that for here. The situation with the Ice House, in my opinion, parking wise, is miniscule, less than six spaces, a restaurant taking ten, twenty, maybe thirty, public parking places on streets. Where is the equity here? The grace, the flexibility, the personalizing of city rulemaking? And no one heard or commented on my comments about the possibility of forty-five degree parking to get more spaces on that parking space area that you talked about. Also, I would have hoped that you would have gone to two, two chairs and a study, if you needed. And lastly, I think I would urge your commission to add the term equity in your thinking when you make decisions. Thanks.
Yes, sir. All right, Larry, you were up.
Uh, thank you. Parking studies, is the goal more parking or less parking? I've been here eight years, I've been told there are approximately fifty parking spaces that were taken out of circulation within the, call it the VMU, whether it's in front of the museum, wherever. I had a, one of our local heroes here telling me, parking, 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 taken out, over years. Where more parking brings more cars, less parking pushes the cars outside of the area. What is the goal? How are we going to enforce this? I mean, um, Andy had his brown bag lunch, talked about parking. Enforcement requires a cop, requires tickets, requires benefits, regard, are we gonna generate? What is the purpose of more parking? Is more parking gonna bring more cars? Or is less parking gonna, I mean, you're gonna have one or the other. It's not like if we keep things the same, it'll just do whatever it does. I mean, do we, does the city buy parking lots and say, okay, this is where you're parking? Are we gonna enforce it? Are you gonna have all residences, are resident people gonna have stickers on their cars that they can park anywhere for any reason? Whereas tourists who don't have a sticker, if they park somewhere wrong, are gonna get nailed with a big fine? I mean, what's the purpose?
Yeah, I think, um-
I mean, it's like the studies, I mean, every time I turn around in this city, I know every, big cities have them too, but it's like, more studies. Okay, well, do something. How about just enforce parking laws now? It's red, somebody's parking in it, tow them. They're parking in front of a driveway, tow them. There's no law on the books about parking in front of a mailbox in the city of Ojai. I was looking, they have, they have them all across the state, we could have a law that says no parking in front of a parking, uh, mailbox from a certain time to a certain time, call it a day. Okay? But enforce the laws to see where we can have more parking. Look at all the places in the city that used to have parking spaces and now they don't, and put those back into, into circulation. We can, we drove downtown on Saturday with a three-year-old and a ten-month-old, we didn't have any problem parking. It's, I think it's more perception, the people who live on Fox, like, we all live in the suburbs, most of us, we're used to. Nobody wants strangers parking in front of their house. They just don't, okay? But, it's a busy street, they've already accepted the Ojai Valley Athletic Club, they've effect, they've accepted the arts, the restaurants, it's on weekends, and then they all go home. But during the week, this is a weekly business, so is that gonna be a big deal? No, only if they park in front of the fire hydrant, the stop sign, the red parking, you know, all the things that the police have to enforce that will make these people or everybody happier. I mean, there are two poles on Bryant in the setback that say visitor parking ninety minutes. Those poles are in concrete, they're illegal signs, but they've been put there, I don't know, twenty years ago, thirty years ago in front of two oh seven Bryant. All right, um, so I mean, all they've gotta do is enforce the parking laws and see how many more parking spaces we can either get rid of or add, but what is the goal? Because the goal is people, traffic, and then you start, well, we get less traffic, we have less customers, we have less sales tax, less TOT, and it all goes together. It's, the studies are great, but for what purpose? More or less parking? More or less people? I don't know, but have another study, then we'll be doing the same thing next year. But just enforce, have them, you know, enforce the laws. I know this is the wrong body for that, I think.
It is.
It is.
But I do think you make an interesting point of our recommendation be, hey, do a study, and while that study's being done, how do we also start to enforce what's currently here? So maybe it's, again, merging multiple proposals.
Right, I mean, Trent lives on Franklin.
Yeah, Larry.
There's no parking on Franklin.
No.
But do they enforce no parking on Franklin?
Larry, I know we're not supposed to be answering questions, but I think the overall vision or the overall idea is to improve circulation throughout the town.
Yes, of course.
We have pockets in the town where we have way too much, you know-
Congestion.
Congestion. And we have other pockets where it's wide open.
Right.
So it all depends on what part of town you're in and the day of the week.
In downtown, it's like the AT&T lot, it's the eighteen thousand feet next to the Shell station.
And you could, you could go downtown on a weekend and it's, it's packed, you can't find parking, you go one street over, it's wide open.
Right, and nobody wants to walk cause they're lazy, it's like parking next to the gym.
So, I mean, you know, parking, it just, and what a study could do is it could, I, help us identify what's in our code. You know, what's not in our code, what can we do to enforce these? Um, so it helps present options from a, a body that's well-respected, a body that is scientifically doing research on this. To say, hey, here's some things you can do, cause that's what we wanna do, we wanna find solutions.
I think it also maybe gives like a, a balance to then, okay, let's say, as you're saying, there's a parking solution, but then there's a, or parking question, but then there's also a. Business and, you know, tax revenue or whatever question, so like, maybe it's both, maybe we want. We do want less parking and we want, well, we also want more revenue.
And it's not really a revenue question, I think it's more of a incentive issue, it's your.
Well, it's the liveliness of the town, and it's like, you know, it's.
A good way, a, an economic way to, to, uh, enforce behavior is through, um, some sort of fine or a penalty.
Right, enforcement.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much for the time.
Or a fee.
But that, but e- either case, in order to solve this problem, there has to be draconian enforcement for parking.
Or they pay.
Well, same difference, pay, tow, confiscate, whatever.
Yeah.
But before you do that, you gotta make sure that like the residents who live here have the permits so that it doesn't hit them. So we're back to like this, like, hey, we need to order of operations and.
And now we have another employee, somebody on the payroll, and it's a whole nother.
Lucas.
I know.
We talked about.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you're, you're good.
We talked about, um.
All right.
I forget what business it was about, like, hey, you, you gotta pay this, oh, AT&T. You gotta pay for the extra parking that you're not gonna do, and it ended up being like four grand or like fourteen grand, like something where like.
Sixteen thousand dollars.
Sixteen thousand dollars forever.
It wasn't even like a year per year or anything.
And is that like a state law, is that a federal law, is that like a local ordinance?
It's a local ordinance, so.
That needs to be part of like our recommendation to city council is, when it comes to these, like, hey, you have to buy the parking, it needs to be an annual thing. And it needs to be probably more, well, I guess sixteen thousand dollars a year would be a lot of money, but.
Typically, those, those impact fees are a one-time fee, but to be fair, it is, it is the, it's one of the lowest fees I've seen.
Yeah, and like, let's not make it an impact fee, let's make it a ongoing fee, like, let's just change the designation that if it's supposed to be.
We have waived that in the past.
We have waived it?
Oh, for sure.
You did, you've done it for several of the businesses. Yeah, several of the businesses.
It's a balance.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna mention businesses, but it's more than five.
A balance between.
I have a question though, um, in the case, cause Larry's now brought up Roti twice.
But I like think about like.
I just have a question.
Oh, I get it.
Unacceptable.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I, I, a, a quick question, when somebody is taking over a business and the new use is identical to the prior use. Um, does that, I thought that that sort of granted an immediate pass.
So it's considered to be grandfathered in unless the use itself wasn't in operation for a hundred and eighty days. And then that use loses all of its.
Right, but its magic power is last a hundred and eighty days to.
Per code, yes.
So I believe that in the case of Roti, for instance, Need went out of the business and Roti went in. And it wasn't a question of it being, go- going through the planning department, I don't, or through the planning commission. I think it was just, okay, there was a, there was a restaurant, coffee shop, indoor, outdoor use. And it was the same, um, the same use and it just became Ojai Roti.
From a parking standpoint, and it's one of the questions, and it's, it's a larger question. There's members of this body that haven't been a party to that, but I'll just make it known. Outdoor, outdoor seating does not require parking.
Mm-hmm.
Period. Our code does not require it.
Yeah, that's been something we've been wanting to talk about.
To be fair, there's a reason for that.
Mm-hmm.
In two thousand and four, when those regulations went into place, it was to promote business.
Yep, yeah, during COVID.
You see that, you see that throughout the documents in two thousand and four.
Yeah.
So that could be something that we would look at in this parking study?
Yeah.
If you're looking at the parking standards, absolutely that would be included.
Yep.
Okay, so I think we killed that thing, um.
Hold on, you guys had made, you guys were starting to make a recommendation, but then you paused that.
Oh, yes, I apologize, yes, let's go back to the recommendation.
That's what I'm here for.
So we had a motion, we had a second, we were gonna vote.
Yeah. I don't propose to change it.
Yeah, I don't propose to change it either, stick with what we had, yeah.
Keeping Larry's comments in our minds.
Yes.
As, as always.
Yes, um, Ida, can we get a roll call?
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
All right, perfect, okay.
Next.
Now we can move on, thank you guys. Uh, future agenda items. This is going to be, uh, yeah, that'll be a busy one, May twenty-first.
So, we do have two items on for the twenty-first. Uh, I would note that recently, like for instance, the Mallory Way bungalows is not going to be a public hearing. That is gonna be a discussion item.
Okay.
Two-step process essentially. The Von sign is ready to go, I will say that they were dragging their feet for a number of months. Um, to get them into compliance with our, with our standards, but they're ready to go now. So those two items I see going on the twenty-first, the only difference is Mallory Way will not be a public hearing, it will be discussion.
Okay.
What that means is there won't be a decision that's being asked for. So it's really allowing for the comments from the community, um, and then going back and getting that additional information.
Do you have to publicize it if it's just a discussion?
We're gonna do it as a courtesy still.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate when you guys do that, it gives the public a extra.
Gives you a little, well, it gives this body a little bit of breathing room to say, this is where you get to air your concerns. And then the community gets to really kind of air their, their laundry. To be fair, Mallory Way has, has been through already a hearing with HPC, Historic Preservation Commission. So this is the second meeting.
All right.
All right.
Was that recent?
Uh, I think it was a month ago, it might have been two meetings ago, actually.
Interesting.
Okay.
And what was decided at that meeting?
I can't go into the specifics of it, instead you'll see in the staff report.
Go, you have to go look at it online.
Will that be included as a document in the, okay, that's, that's, that's really what.
Their recor- their recommendations will be, be a part of the discussion.
Thank you, yeah, I think, uh, are we, are we still have June fourth, June eighteenth, we have something coming on those, you think?
Maybe, maybe not. Um, there's a couple of items that could potentially go on for the fourth. But I'm not holding my breath that they're gonna have everything ready.
Okay, all right. Okay, what else we got? Um, and then the pending items are just pending, we'll wait to see what happens with those things.
Yep.
Um, okay, cool, any, uh, director's report?
Um, I just want to report out that this last weekend, we had community development department. I didn't mention this, I apologize for not mentioning this before to this body, but we had a workshop slash open house for tiny homes.
Yes, you did.
And that happened on Saturday morning, from ten to eleven AM, where we invited the public to come. And, um, hear about the process for tiny homes for the future ordinance.
Burn down.
Um, and then on top of that, we had an open house, uh, that was one of the tiny homes that was cited. So we only have three tiny homes in the city of Ojai. And the builder and the property owner were agreeable to allowing that to take place. The fun thing is, the geek out thing that I get to report out on is that satisfies one of our programs through a housing element, so that's a. It's one of the nineteen where I get to check the box and when we do the APR for next year, um, I get to report that out as being done.
That is awesome, I love it.
Anytime that we can solve some of those bigger issues, this was one of them where I was racking my head trying to figure out how we're gonna solve this. And it was, it presented itself with, um, some oversight on my end, we were there Saturday and Sunday and staff was as well. Um, but satisfied one of those requirements.
Uh, just question, was there more than one vendor of tiny homes?
Just one. It was, it was referred to as Venture Homes, which was the builder for that specific, um, tiny home.
I would urge you to ha- have one other vendor available for that, for meetings like that. I think that this thing being a, an opportunity for the commercialization of that vendor's product is something that becomes problematic.
I made it very clear when, when we did these, when we did the workshop and the open house. That the city is not partnering with these individuals, they've just offered it up. Being that they were a builder in the city, it made logical sense to use them, um, and just take advantage of that opportunity. And the fact that it was downtown, it was walkable, um, so.
And I, and I did tour it, and it's not as tiny as you think, it's pretty, it's got a lot of room, I was surprised.
It's three, it was three hundred and ninety-nine square feet, so it was the, the maximum bill that you could have.
Yeah. Well, cool, um, any commission member reports?
Yes.
Oh, you did have one.
I have one, yes.
Awesome.
I attended the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council on Monday, April twenty-first. And at that meeting, they introduced the chief of police, Stephen Jenkins. Um, he said something that I found interesting, they are buying, I think it was forty, but don't hold me to that number. Electric bikes and they will be, um, patrolling the trail. So I thought that was.
Yeah.
That was a good step forward.
The police department has forty?
I, I'm not sure about the forty, cause I thought I heard that, but, um, they are buying e-bikes. This would be county one.
This is county, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they will be patrolling the trail with them, which is really good. Um, they also had a, um, discussion of the park. That they are building in Miners Oaks, um, it's a private park, but open to the public. Something I didn't understand before, and it was started in twenty twenty-one. And it's probably a year out from the opening.
Is that on the field next to the, the school?
Just the public.
It's a kind of across from the church.
And the church.
Oh, okay.
Heard there was gonna be a park, but I don't understand the private, public.
Yeah, I, that was interesting, um, they've been raising money for it and, but it's open to the public, um. They are taxing the properties around it to raise money as well.
Okay.
Which, again, for a private park, and they would tax, but that's what they said.
Yeah. All right, okay, commission member report done, city council liaison, it looks like we don't have Mr. Whitman here today, unless he's online, are you online, Mr. Whitman?
There's no, there's no one online.
No one line on that, okay, all right, so with that, we will officially adjourn at eight oh two. Awesome, thank you guys.
My son is born on Friday.
Whoa, congratulations.